Police officials, we have encouraged by live media, press and assembly that we respect the local police officials and acknowledge that they are here to protect us and enforce the law. We have developed a sense of community, respected and beautified the park, and proven that we are dedicated to maintain the integrity of this group. At the occupation, we have our own general assembly. We have learned how hard it is to democratically come to a decision with so many different opinions and different viewpoints. With time, patience and dedication, our decision always reflects the best interest of the majority, and we have often compromised when individuals do not agree. For my closing statement, my only hope is that when you consider approving our civil rights to assemble in Cesar Chavez Park, that you use the same patience, time and dedication our movement has when it comes to making decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathaniel, and then we have Cesar Aguirre, I believe it is, and then Chelsea Villegas, and Jeanne Keltner.
Hey guys, uh, my name's Nate. Uh, I'm a psychologist, licensed here in the state of California. Uh, I'm kinda hungry, I know you guys are probably hungry too, you guys wanna get home? So I'll keep it short. Come on guys, just help us out. I mean, Kevin, we're not asking a lot. Everybody, everybody in this whole place wants this to happen. Just, you guys can do it, just make it happen, man. It, it's not a big deal, we got people up here that are upset, we got people out there upset, we don't need to be upset, we just need to go eat some bagels, uh, enjoy some bridges, and, uh, just get this done. Please just help us out, Kevin. Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks Nate.
Okay, Cesar Aguirre?
You used some psychology on us.
All right, how y'all doing tonight? I know, uh, it's been kinda long. Um, let me say, my name's Cesar Aguirre, in case, you know, that was a little... I understand it's difficult. Um, I just wanna say, I was born here, I've lived here all my life, my family, everyone I know in my family, everyone close to me has lived here all their life, I don't wanna go anywhere else but Sacramento. I really care about this city, the people here, I care about, not just about people here, everyone all over the world, I'm concerned, if we don't do something, it's gonna affect the entire world. We have this opportunity to do something, to not just forget about what's wrong with our government, what's wrong with this nation, the things that have gone wrong in the past years that we have just been apathetic to. And it's, I'm just, I'm sick of, of, of putting it aside for entertainment, for whatever distractions, I'm, I'm done with it, I'm not, I, I, I'm here speaking to you, and I'm glad that you guys are listening, I understand it's, it's difficult to get all this criticism all at once, but, you know, it's gotta come out somewhere, so, and I appreciate your time, and I am very grateful to have the amazing cast of people here in Sacramento that have just inspired me to finally come out and tell you guys, we need to change things now. We need your help in making this a better place for our children to live for future years to come. Thank you.
Thanks, Cesar.
Chelsea?
Thanks for patiently waiting.
Hello, my name's Chelsea Villegas. Um, I'm a Sacramento native, went through our local public school system, graduated from our university, and have contributed for years in our workforce as a taxpaying citizen. Uh, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be heard tonight. Um, I've had to cut this short because of the time, uh, so forgive me if it's a bit jumbled, um, but I do wanna say a couple things, uh, money is not the root of all evil. In fact, it's been an invaluable tool for our evolution, but we have reached the tipping point. The population of the earth has reached critical mass, the current system no longer serves humanity, for too many suffer as a result of the inevitable greed and hoarding that coincides with such a modality of commerce. We are asked now to be enlightened, we are asked to become personally responsible and inspired rather than extrinsically motivated. This may be a tough pill to swallow for those who cannot think outside of the conditionings of a system in which we were all reared, and for those who are convinced that being human means to be selfish, greedy, lazy and extrinsically motivated. Uh, this will be hard for many because they have been cultivated to be so, uh, so this is also what they believe others are. I'm here to explain that a great awakening is happening, and millions of people are finally proclaiming this is not who they are. These people of hope are crying out to the hearts of others to reach inside themselves and evolve. These people have done the very difficult spiritual work to transcend their own conditionings and look inside themselves to ask what will truly fulfill them, and they've found the only thing that can truly satisfy us and alleviate the disease of desire and endless consumption is love, and not just love for ourselves and our families, this love is for life itself, for the life of our planet, our species and all other systems on earth. When you achieve this enlightenment, you fall deeply in love with humanity and life, you're able to see clearly the endless inefficiencies of our system, and therefore you become intrinsically motivated to change it, as I am. Change yourself and you truly change the world. Blessings and love to you, my brothers and sisters, fear not for your ventures, for you will succeed if you look within and reprioritize. The movement you see before you is a historical revolution of consciousness, and you have the opportunity to be an integral part in that evolution of your species. You have the opportunity to prove you are dedicated to your citizens and to the Constitution of the United States of America. You have the opportunity to recognize that if you hinder the progress of this occupation by preventing us to peaceably assemble, to challenge our government, you truly enslave yourself and forfeit your own rights, and let us not even imagine what would come of our nation if our constitution no longer holds value. What then will govern the people? Brute force? What message are we sending about the value of the revolutionary men and women that came before us? Brothers and sisters, thank you, last, last, final thought. The brothers and sisters that fought and died to protect the rights of the people that would come generations after them, and what value is there in having a town square dedicated to such love for humanity and democracy if we not, if we do not practice what our monuments preach? I ask you tonight to see the opportunity before you, to uphold the rights of your fellow citizens, to perpetuate benevolence, peace and democracy for the sake of your own lives, the lives of your children, and the life of our very mother earth, and to understand the massive destruction that is possible if you do not. Thank you, goodnight.
Thanks, Chelsea.
Jeanne Keltner?
Is Jeanne here? Yep.
And then Mac Worthy, and then Kathleen Horton.
Honorable mayor and council members, I hope you will listen to everything that has been said, and I think I join with Sean in inviting you to come down to Cesar Chavez Park or come over there and listen to what these young people and people of different ages and different classes and incomes are saying. God knows, they have already accomplished the Herculean task of making the most important issue visible, which is this enormous inequality of wealth and power that is destroying our democracy and the lives of so many people. Everybody does better when every, uh, everybody does better. And these people are out there meeting, connecting, discussing, organizing, learning, trusting, sharing, showing a new way. Why don't you cross over the street, come down and talk to them, invite other offices of the city to come down and talk to them too? There's a lot of wisdom there that didn't get any degrees in college and can't afford them right now, but you can share in it just by crossing the street.
Thank you, Jeanne.
Mac Worthy?
I get pranked for a minute, and I need two years to discuss what I think. I'll say, uh, I observed the Six Movement in a cornfield when my daddy talked to a president of tenured, he was working for Focus Integration Company. Died for five years. I entered Morris College in South Carolina, I was having a contract to demonstrate. We wasn't educating nothing, these people are educating people. I had a problem, because you see this here, a lot of my relatives are white too, we had a problem. And when you're dealing with capitalism, uh, people don't come front and teach it. You're helping these kids, because it won't be no peaceful thing, like when I dropped out and come to California, because I died, because if you put that dog on me, I'm gonna shoot you. That's why I'm not. And you won't see me demonstrating unless I can hire a security with an arm, just like this man here got an arm. The police will kill you and go to that courthouse and walk scot-free, way in America. Let them know what needs to be changed is from the Supreme Court, if you appoint it, you'll have four years or you'll have eight years and change faces. America's constitution don't even worth the ink that it was written in. I didn't have no four parents in Pennsylvania, four fathers, but we was here in America. What, what did we benefit from the Six Movement? A chaos. Every black woman had a, two babies in the burb, they gave her a check, and she signed arrest for her man's, for child support. Nobody talk about it, people. Disadvantize us. We ain't got one entity that can, we can hire 20 people on. What did we gain? Who professed from it? We went down the tube. The chains, when we accept both integration. We wasn't fighting and shooting each other in South Carolina, we was working in the same field, some of them going to the same church, but all of a sudden you're coming up. But people didn't tell you, uh, Kevin, when you were here, when we had the people last month, you, when I spoke with you personally, the people have spoken. These people here have spoken too. You went to them, you can't have it both ways, baby. This ain't the last shot in NBA. This ain't the last shot in NBA, you can't have it both ways.
Final thought, sir.
Let these people stay in the park overnight, they really don't need a police department with a gun, they tell you, we peaceful. That's all y'all do. Allow them to change, that waiver is in that clause, because nobody tested that argument against constitutionality, and that's what we gotta do. And help these people, because these are people, when this thing gets bigger, I'm gonna be out there too. They're gonna be, they're gonna be, yeah, because the Six Movement...
All right, Matt, we need your final thoughts, sir.
The average black man don't have a shotgun, you got people around here. Get ready, people, just coming.
Thank you.
All right, Kathleen Horton, and then Angie Bottomley, and then Russell Rawlins.
I'm gonna really try to keep this in a minute, okay?
Thanks, Kevin.
You already know the rights that we, the people, have, or at least you should, since you were elected to uphold the law and serve the people of the city. That is why I ask you, as a citizen of the city of Sacramento, and as someone who has witnessed firsthand these rights being stripped from other valuable citizens of the city, to lift this silly camping ordinance placed on our public park. We simply wish to stand in solidarity with Occupy Wall Street and 1,554 other cities in this country and around the world who are making great strides in raising awareness to our highest level of government corruption and peacefully demonstrating against the atrocities committed against these people. When I see 36 police cars, two Patty Wagon and two CSI SUVs pull up to block off two streets and shut down a peaceful assembly, my heart sinks, and my suspicions that things are not what they seem behind the curtain are reaffirmed. This movement calls for a great organization and logistics team to effectively educate and inform the people what is truly happening in this country, and having to leave and come back, break down and set up and essentially start from scratch the next day is hindering our rights to be able to connect and share with our community, and to make it easy to assemble and speak together democratically about the changes we would like to see within our government. The city should be respecting our rights, not taking them away, and not wasting the time of our police who force us to leave the public park in a time when we need to utilize the space to better our country. Like we chanted to the police as they surrounded us in the park, this is not a riot, it's a riot. Thank you.
Angie?
Thanks, Kathleen.
Is Angie Bottomley here?
All right, Angie, going once, twice, all right?
Russell Rawlins?
We have Russell here. All right, Russell.
And then Scott Rogers after Russell.
Take your time, Russell, take your time. Who's after Russell?
Scott Rogers.
Okay, great. Kevin, you could also take the mic here, she'll give you a mic either.
Good evening, uh, mayor and city council, it's, uh, another late night here. Uh, this is a more exciting evening, I would say, than the last time I was here. Um, last time I saw oppression that was committed by this council, and this time I'm seeing oppression committed by this council. Um, these are people that, we are a people, that are seeking, uh, answers to these questions. Why have we been oppressed for so long? Um, this morning I had a very engaging, uh, conversation with, um, some other disability, uh, groups that are around the country, trying to figure out how to get in on this. Um, I was arrested alongside Cindy on Saturday, and I saw the strength in these people, and I was moved to Occupy as well. And, um, I will be out there again this evening, so if you choose to arrest me again, I will go. Thank you.
Thanks, Russell.
Scott?
Hands. When I was young, my mother taught me to speak truth to power. She also taught me that in the position of power is very important that you listen to the truth. The truth has been spoken really clearly here, but there's some more truths involved, okay? There's a whole bunch. 66% on a KCR, a KCR-A poll is in favor of this. 87% on a Reuters poll is in favor of this. And when it comes right down to it, if that many people are in favor of this, and you guys are not in favor of this, then there's going to be a former assembly, or council person, and a former mayor on your names, and a former city manager on your names. There is no doubt about this. Just be very clear, in this very honest and total true discourse, the people are behind this. We will not stop, never. It will continue, it will grow, it will get bigger, and it will never, ever stop.
Thanks, Scott.
Timothy?
Timothy?
Reader or reading?
Reader.
Reader.
All right, Timothy Reader.
And then Mark Sitton, and then Arya Rashid. Arya already spoke, I believe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members, thanks for hearing us. Um, I will start with a rhetorical question and a brief statement of thanks for my fellow occupiers. What's an occupation? Is it something you visit? Is it something you drive by, read about or watch on the internet? No. What do you do? You occupy. We wanna occupy 24/7. I mean, that's the whole point of it. And now my statement. Good evening, occupied Sacramento, there was quite a wonderful turnout this weekend. There is every reason to believe that the occupation of the 99% will continue to snowball in size. I am so proud to be a Sacramentoan, because I see such a beautiful outpouring of community spirit, cooperation and constructive solutions which enable direct democracy. Thanks facilitators, you rock. Thanks campers, you are tough and peaceful and patient. Thanks media team, you keep us informed and talking to each other. Thanks teachers, you open our minds to new ideas and affirm our shared truths. Thanks to those who feed us and those who set up the kitchen and booths and clean up. And finally, thanks citizens of Cesar Chavez Park, you selflessly give your time and energy and love. I'm honored to know you. Thank you.
Thanks, Timothy.
Mark?
All right, Mark.
And then it'll be Terry Sheets.
Uh, I'm gonna start off by reading lyrics from John Lennon. Um, "As soon as you're born, they make you feel small by giving you no time instead of at all, till the pain is so big you feel nothing at all. They hurt you at home and they hate you at school, they hate you if you're clever and they despise the fool. Till you're so crazy you can't follow their rules, when they've tortured and scared you for 20-odd years, then they expect you to pick a career. When you can't really function, you're so full of fear. Keep you doped with religion and sex and TV, and you think you're so clever and classless and free, but you're still, you're still a peasant as far as I can see. There's room at the top, they're telling you still, but first you must learn how to smile as you kill. If you wanna be like the folks on the hill, a working-class hero is something to be." And I'm sorry, I can't, I can't just sit here anymore. I'm tired of having my voice not met, my dreams not met, and I don't know about you, but I definitely didn't dream to be a city council member my entire life. I wanted to be a baseball player, a firefighter, and now I have all these people behind me who want their dreams to be met, who want their voices to be heard, but that shouldn't stop between 5:00 and 11:00 or 11:00 to 5:00, that's just ridiculous. My voice is a 24-hour, seven days a week, 365-days-a-year thing, doesn't stop for six hours. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. What was the name of that John Lennon song? What was the name?
Terry?
Good evening, Mayor Johnson and honorable council members. My name is Terry Sheets. I live in the Southland Park area of Councilmember Florence District. I have a, just, I started a small business, I'm a professional consultant, and I believe that I have been the victim of actions taken by the big banks and lenders as both a consumer and a small business owner. I am in favor of allowing Occupy Sacramento to peacefully Occupy Chavez Park, to do the critical work of educating our community. I can actually consider myself to be an educated woman, but it only took, uh, six months of what I call the swirling vortex of terror that occurred in my life in 2010, uh, to, to turn my entire financial world upside down. What, uh, what Occupy Sacramento reminds me of are these words, "We, the people, in order to form a more perfect union." In my opinion, corporate America no longer considers good, hard-working Americans to be people. We've been reduced to FICO scores and risk factors and financial models that are done in back rooms. And, but what I'm finally seeing is that Americans are fed up and are protesting against the right organizations, those major financial institutions, mortgage lenders and the major corporations, that seem to have so much control over our lives. I do understand why the city of Sacramento imposed the ordinances that it did against camping. Uh, I heard about those, I understand why those were put in place. I do not believe that the city council then, nor the city council now, uh, is acting to restrict the, the free speech rights, even though many people may disagree with me. But I do believe that all that, all that Occupy Sacramento wants is a safe place to do the critical ed work of educating our community, and so, of some of that education that I didn't even have in going through my financial issues. I think even, uh, Mr. Chavez himself would have agreed that Occupy Sacramento be allowed to peacefully protest at the, at his park, named after, named in his, or, named in his honor, especially for the purpose of forming a more perfect union. With that, I thank you very much for allowing us to be heard.
Thanks, Terry.
Brendan? Brendan Bishop? And then Robert Ariaga, and then Kevin Lipscomb.
Uh, mayor, uh, city council members, uh, Dolores Huerta, Fred Ross Jr. and Cesar Chavez all have one thing in common, they were not afraid to stand up and get arrested. I got arrested on, uh, Saturday. I've never been arrested in my life, I'm a law-abiding citizen, and, uh, I think it's ridiculous that I am not allowed to, uh, let's see, is it camp in a park? I was not camping, I was sitting down with, uh, 16 other people along with Cindy Sheen. I don't get it. I really don't. You know, if it's about the homeless, I think it's safer to, uh, camp in a park than, uh, on a sidewalk. Um, is it about saving money? Uh, I think sending, you know, Patty, Patty Wagon's, uh, riot gear with pellet guns and batons, you know, that's pretty scary, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna leave. Uh, wow, that was quick. Um, you know, I wrote, I wrote this at work today, yes, I do have a job, uh, I don't have any student loan debt, uh, and my house has not been foreclosed on, but I do still believe in fighting for everybody else. This isn't just a movement about me, it's about everybody. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Brendan.
Robert?
Good evening. I have a quick question, uh, are you all gonna vote on this after we're done talking? Tonight, right now in front of us? That was a not rhetorical question.
Yeah. Finish your, finish your comments and I'll address it.
So you will vote after, after we're all done speaking?
I'm saying, finish your comments and I'll address it at the end.
Okay, I understand, okay. Well, tonight we've seen pretty, a, a really good, uh, example of all of Sacramento here. We've seen old, young, white, black lawyers, uh, I myself am an engineer, also a marine, former combat vet, and, uh, mayor, it was brilliant, I thought, when you had everybody here, uh, accurate representation of Sacramento, stand up in 100% support of the park. Uh, in a democracy, which is what America used to be, uh, this is a no-brainer, 100% of the people wanna use the park, you let them use the park, done deal. So, unfortunately, the reason we're all here is because we feel we no longer do live in a democracy, and that there's gonna be a problem with you letting us use the park. We, really, most of us honestly don't think you're gonna let us use it. And so, what that's gonna show is that we're justified in being here, that we don't live in a democracy anymore. In a democracy, the elected officials, which are you, represent and enact the will of the people, that's the definition of a democracy. If that doesn't happen, then that means your loyalties are not to the people, and it means that we do not live in a democracy. So I challenge you right now, in front of everybody, to put your hands up and to show of support for this as a vote, if you're gonna use it, if you let us use the park or not, or don't put your hands up and show that you're not, in front of everybody right now. That's my challenge, thank you.
So wait, wait, let me answer your question. So what we're doing tonight is hearing from the public, and then we will deliberate, talk amongst ourselves, and then maybe perhaps give, uh, direction to staff, but this is what this is helpful for us to hear from you members.
Okay, well, I don't find that acceptable. I think that the people need to see right now, based on 100% of the representatives of Sacramento, from what you've heard tonight, what is your vote, right now?
So let me explain, I get it's not acceptable for you, which I'm, I'm not disputing that, but there's...
Okay, then it doesn't even have to be...
Hold on, hold on one second, hold on one second, hold on one second. I'm saying that it's not on our agenda as an action item to vote, but this is what tonight was for, is to hear from the public, so then we could start talking about it in front, in front, hold on, hold on one second. In front of the public, which is what you wanted to say, so let us hear the rest of the speakers, and then let us have our dialogue in front of everyone here today.
Okay, then as an unofficial vote.
We, Rob, we, we need the next speaker, we appreciate that though. Thank you.
Kevin? Lipscomb?
Is Kevin Lipscomb here? Is Kevin here?
That's me.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Don't start the clock yet.
No way, no way.
Don't start it yet. Okay, I'm gonna let you know.
Reset the clock for Kevin, reset the clock.
Okay, let's sit, let's go.
Go.
Hi, mayor, how's that new stadium coming? What about making a place for people whose cars are their homes to park and be safe? Just, just property, that's all we need. Um, but anyway, two, are we a government of judges by the judges? Are we a government of police by the police? Are we a government of the people by the people? You let me get this straight. I understand Cindy Sheen was arrested in, in a park. Is the park private property? Or is it public? Is it a public park? She violated the law and was arrested just for being in a public park? With no consideration of amnesty? Maybe this situation would be different if all the people who are arrested violated our laws by illegally sneaking past the border patrolmen's. Um, the, the, some people who are not only offered sanctuary, those people who are not on, only offered sanctuary, but whose, whose unlawful interests are protected by boycotts of Arizona, which I don't agree with, okay? Furthermore, you had this mother of a soldier who gave his life upholding the Constitution arrested? You should be ashamed. And to all the soldiers involved in your oil-American military wars? And all the soldiers who died for that military oil, oil war occupation? All you soldiers, you see what happened to Cindy? See how they're, they will treat your mom? That's how your mom will be treated. Pretty much, they all don't give a damn. See, there should be more moms of soldiers surrounding and supporting Cindy Sheen, like the moms against drunk driving. Okay, uh, let's see.
Kevin? Can we...
Kevin?
You, you got 2 minutes and 33 seconds so far. We give you an extra minute and 33 seconds.
got there, Kevin. Please, don't, how, don't go against the people who elected you. That's all I've got to say.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, Tim Boyd, John Krantz, and Louis, I believe it's R-E-D-O-B-L-E.
All right, Tim, John, are you speaking again? You're after Tim. You're after Tim. Okay.
Good evening, City Council. I'm here again tonight. About a month and a half ago, we were here talking about redistricting, and I'm really, really hoping tonight that you use this time to reflect on the past transgressions that went down here and restore your faith in your voting public by doing the right thing for these people that need to have their voices heard. That redistricting thing was a joke. It was hypocrisy, and democracy did not go well. There are a lot of people throughout all of your districts that, when you voted for that, a lot of people are very, very upset, and people are very displeased. They're not trusting of the people that are sitting in these seats right now. So this is a time for redemption, it's a time for reflection. And Chief Brazil, if you're worried about people and public safety, go check those bathrooms out. I feel more safe in that park now with these decent people out there. We have to call 311 yesterday to get lights in the bathroom. Young people have been raped, pedophiles are lurking around in your city, and you know this, and you have police officers standing there, and these bathrooms are dark, and people have to go in there in the dark. So let's think about this stuff, and let's reexamine this stuff, and give it some serious thought. Harrison, people, thank you, please.
Thanks, Tim.
John?
Yep. Would you listen to the passion in this room? Would you listen to the level of intelligence that the people have put behind some of their comments? How can we afford to waste this talent? These are our future that we're looking at out here. One day, I can't help but believe that the people that will be sitting in your chairs will be coming from this room somewhere. And a lot of us are gonna be sitting in wheelchairs in some rest home. I feel like we're here on this council. I'd love to be here myself. Now, keeping that in mind, well, maybe we want to do, instead of arrest these people, is stop to them. Now, I realize that a lot of things are asking for way outside the scope of what you're able to do here. These are problems that are international and national-level things, but maybe we could sit down and draft a resolution to send a war campaign, and let President Obama need to know what we want him to do. He can't read our minds. And maybe with the help of the elder statesmen in this room, we could draft a resolution that makes sense to him, and absolutely gives him some constructive criticism, instead of just standing there and yelling at him, and calling him names, because that doesn't do any good. Let's come up with a formula that'll work here. Let's put your wisdom together with their passion and energy, and see if we can come up with a solution to this mess that this country is in right now.
Thanks, John.
Louis?
Okay, we, we have our final three speakers. You want to name their names, please?
Right. Louis Redobel, Redoble, I'm not sure how it's spelled, I'm sorry.
All right, who's after Louis?
And then Lori Funera, and then Jan Rain.
All right, great. Mayor Johnson, City Council, I just wanted to address one thing that I had heard in the past meeting that we had, was that one of you had commented that you had came to the occupation and said that there was about forty people. Well, I would like to say that your attempt to make our movement seem small has clearly failed, as you can see the amount of people that are here inside and outside. And also, I would like everybody that supports the 99%, to please hold up those speakers. Now, I want you to look at all these people's faces and truly think to yourself, why would you completely deny these people's rights? It's not fair at all. It's not. And I, I mean, I admit that I had been hopeless at a point. I thought, wow, corporations and government is bigger than myself. But being around these people for about two weeks, and meeting about like at least twenty of them, I've completely changed my mind. I've seen hopeless people turn into leaders, like leading chants, out on street corners. And when, if you were to tell these people that you can't get rid of the camp ordinance, it's basically telling them that fighting for democracy isn't worth it. Like, well, it's not. It shouldn't even be a problem where we have to be here and ask you to let, let this. So please, consider. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Louis. We have our final two speakers.
Lori?
Do we have Lori here? Great.
Mayor Kevin Johnson, members of Sacramento City Council, I was also told to prepare a two-minute talk. I've been a resident of Sacramento for thirty, yeah, thirty-something years, raised my daughter
here. I'm also a retired history teacher, essentially unemployed. I was with you at City Council in the spring when teen programs and senior centers from across Sacramento and Oak Park Community, across Sacramento, and Oak Park Community Center helped fill the house, like we have here today, represented. I was here when the Sacramento Police Officers filled the house, represented. Council members, I heard you express great concern about the cuts to jobs and public services. You said your hands were tied, and this is why I'm here, in support of Occupy Sacramento. Last week, Councilmember Khan, Councilmember Ashby, you both said that the entire City Council is part of the 99%, and that you are with us, and no one on the council objected. I encourage you to see Occupy Sacramento as a movement of your constituents, helping you to do your job, to pass policies that provide for local jobs and public services, not policies for the 1%, for the top 1%. An amazing thing happened in June. For the first time in forty years since the Vietnam War, US mayors across the country passed an anti-war resolution. This National Mayor's War Dollars Home Resolution, which, Mayor Kevin, we are glad to hear that you support. This would bring the war dollars, this would bring those war dollars home to help you and Sacramento City Council do your job, to serve and represent the 99%. But almost no one knows it even happened, let alone that it's now in Congress. That's due to the commercial media controlled by the top 1%. Yet, mayors across the country know that the Mayor's War Dollars Home Resolution can help you do your job and stop the cuts. Occupy Sacramento can help you with that. We are Democrats, Republicans, third-party folks, probably no party folks, too. We want to put an end to the rule by the top 10%. We are what democracy looks like. And I'd like to read you the, the paragraph, the few, the few lines that went across the internet that sparked this movement. Adbusters put it out. "We demand that Barack Obama ordain a presidential commission tasked with ending the influence money has over our representatives in Washington." And I, I would add, "over the commercial corporate media. It's time for democracy, not corporatocracy. We are doomed without it." Thank you very much. I encourage you to pass such a resolution.
Thanks, Lori.
Jan?
All right, Jan, you're the final speaker.
Yes. Lot of pressure on me, isn't there?
Bad cleanup.
Mayor Johnson and members of the council, you are our elected representatives in Sacramento, and you are us. Ten years ago, I invented and taught a course called Law, Wealth, Concentration, and Democracy, and we have all seen the devastation that overweening political power pushed through by unequal money has brought upon the ordinary citizens of this country. People losing homes, jobs, amazing devastation, and has cramped your ability through the loss of revenue as a result of this crisis to serve the needs of the people. Unable to counter this overweening power through the usual channels, the people now seek to redress this imbalance by gathering in our public streets and our public parks to insist on economic and political justice for all Americans. We're asking you, as our representatives, to support this uncorrupted democratic effort. I recognize that government has legitimate concerns about public order, so I want to address that issue directly. Every assembly of this group that I have attended has been peaceful, friendly, respectful of the rights of others, and orderly. I, there is no reason to doubt that this will continue. On Sunday alone, there were at least twelve to fourteen hundred of us who marched from Cesar Chavez Park over to the Capitol. The people who were marching included families with little children, people of all ages, old, young, I'm seventy. You know, so, I mean, this is a cross-section of, of the community. So I'm asking you to grant the waiver that we seek. If trouble arises later, you can always revisit this issue, but give us a chance to show you the direct, uncorrupt, uncorrupted democracy. We want to work with the government, not starve it to the point that it cannot serve the community's needs. Stand with us. Please don't put this council on the wrong side of history. Please don't put this council on the wrong side of the people. Please don't give people a reason to be disillusioned with government. Please don't disappoint us. Don't let us down. Thank you very much.
coming out, and you guys conducted yourselves, you articulated very well, and I don't think any of us can disagree with what you've said and the issues that you have here before, before us. So that's just one big thank you for having and us being able to see democracy in action. So we appreciate that. All right, we'll have some, a couple conversations here and some thoughts. I'll start off with Councilmember Khan.
Thank you, Mayor, and let me start off by saying I do believe that I am one among the 99 here, as I stayed last week, and I appreciate the hospitality that I was treated with when I came out to talk with some folks here last week. I'm not sure where this Occupy movement's going. Each city, it's a little different, but I'm convinced you are on the right side of history, and I'm there with you. And I, I would like to see this city leadership be there with you as well. There are many voices out there. We hear anger, we hear despair, disappointment, but we also hear hope, conviction, a sense of community, a sense that things can be done, that change can be done for the better. So I, in particular, believe what one speaker said, that, that we've spent the last fifteen years with a lot of apathy in this country, and it's good to see that people are not being apathetic, and that they're out speaking their mind about what's right and what's wrong in this country and in this community. And the social and economic equality, the inequality that seems to be at the root of much of the movement here is certainly something that's gotten much, much worse over the last fifteen years. So I support your right to Occupy Chavez Plaza, for the Marine veteran who was trying to count votes there. I do believe it has to be subject to reasonable restrictions, time, place, manner, but I believe it's possible to work something out where, where we can ensure you can keep your equipment out in the park, that whoever is necessary to, to be there to secure that, so that you don't lose hours in the morning and in the evening putting that together. So that's not the same thing, just to be clear, as doing away with the camping ordinance. It's, it's supporting the right to protest, and including the, the means you need to, to keep that protest going. Also, to the protesters, please buy something once in a while from the small businesses like Cafe Soleil and Laboo, and I know some of you are, but they can use your help. We've lost a lot of small businesses, not Wall Street businesses, small businesses all around our downtown, have suffered tremendously during this down period. The state with the furloughs hasn't helped, it's made things much, much worse. And I know a lot of you don't have much to spend, but some of you do. Please spend it with some of our local businesses. They, they really can use the help, especially right here around the park, because although it's not your intent, there will be some people who, who may not come downtown because they hear about the protest. You need to make up for that. Make sure they have planned business. Tell your friends, family, come down, help, help our downtown businesses. Heck, all of our small businesses in the city. I also want to take up John Krantz, who proposed that we start drafting some kind of statement of principles. You mentioned a resolution. I, I would like to, to see if we can work on that, because that's one thing I haven't actually seen as a clear statement of what everyone agrees on. Certainly, everyone here agrees on the right to Occupy Chavez Plaza, and the right to peaceful protests, and the right to free speech and free assembly under our Constitution, which is important in and of itself. But we know the movement is more than just that, because the Ku Klux Klan could ask for the same thing. The movement is more than that, and so I think it would be helpful to, to try to put that down. So I, I'd be more than happy to, as one of the gray hairs, John, to, to work on that with you. Thank you.
All right, so you've heard from any other council member? Want to make comment at this point? Councilmember Ashby? Uh, Councilmember Ashby?
Well, it's a lot, you know what I mean? I went over there too. And, uh, I was welcomed to, and it was a small turnout that day. Um, but there, you know, nonetheless, I had an opportunity to speak with some of you, right? And we had some good conversation. Um, I had a hard time in, at that meeting, kind of getting my mind around it, because as, as you know, there were some folks with very different issues that they were out there representing, and, and they did not agree amongst themselves, which is okay, because the issue here is really just an opportunity to speak and be heard. And I get that. And I think we do all support that. How we support that, and I told you this last week from me, how we support that is what we have to decide here. And I think Councilmember Cohn is trying to take us down a path where we can find some type of compromise, the, you know, dealing with the equipment or the essential part of, of what your struggle is with having to get the equipment in and out. Um, I will, I do want to say just a, a couple of things that I think it's important for you guys to understand. Um, first of all, it's not true that there haven't been any injuries yet. There, there has been an injury to one of our police officers. As a, uh, hang on.
Okay, hold. So all I, all I ask, I know motions are running high, but don't ruin a good thing. You guys have done a very good job tonight, so let's not cancel it out, please. Go ahead. Sorry about that, Councilmember.
It's okay. But, well, first of all, it wasn't a male police officer. It was a female police officer, and she was injured. And, um, so I just want you to know that. So you can see everyone's not peaceful. That's my whole point, okay? And that sometimes one or, one or two people.
Okay, li- listen, hold on one second. Listen to this, though. I mean, we're.
Every, everything is.
Hold on one second, Councilmember. What we're trying to do is take in everything that people said. Allow us a few moments to have a conversation. Please respect Councilmember Ashby. Please do that. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and thank you guys for sitting here too. You've been sitting here this whole time. You've been sitting here for weeks, waiting for us to come back and say something to you. But I want to tell you the truth. I'm not just going to sit up here and say something that I don't believe to be right. I, it wouldn't be me if I didn't do that, okay? So I'm going to be me as each of you has been you, and I expect you to be. I absolutely respect your right to say something, and I want to hear what you have to say. Or, you know, I have freedom too. I could get up and leave, right? And you have freedom too. You could not vote for me. I heard one person in here say they were from District One. And, and that's fine. And there may be others. And there's probably tons of others who aren't in the room. But you got to know, I mean, we get emails too from people who don't want you in the park. And we have to try to balance that and figure out a way for you to have that voice and at the same time have the community of Sacramento to have their park, okay? So I'm trying to help you find that balance. And, uh, I will be supportive of Councilmember Cohn and his motion and, uh, or his suggestion there and how we can, how we can do that. I don't like the arrests either. I don't like anybody to get hurt. I don't want any of you to get hurt. I don't want any officers to get hurt. I don't want anybody to get hurt. In fact, when I was out there, there were lots of kids, and they seemed to be just fine and doing just fine. There were also loose dogs. Remember that? And there was somebody else, one of you frantically trying to, you know, fix that situation. So I think for every time there, every time that there was something that needed to be repaired, one of you was trying very hard to fix that. And I appreciate that. And I just want to give you one example of why I agree with you. And I think the lady here that said she was in District One, do you live in North Natomas? Okay, so I really appreciate that you're out there, because a lot of what you guys are talking about and what we talked about has to do with federal money. My single biggest issue in our district right now is a federal appropriation for a levy. And I can't get it because of the Republican rules around earmarks. And, and it's very difficult. This effort is helpful in that. So I, I do want to have some type of resolve to help you have a voice and to encourage the city of Sacramento to take a good position in that. But we also have to, I believe, honor and respect the rules we put in place to keep people safe. So we have to find a balance. And that's my, uh, my position on all of it.
All right, thank you. All right, so I think most council members have spoken and have listened. So here, here's what I, here would be my thought. Um, anybody else want to speak up? Are we okay for now? All right, so what, well, here's what I recommend. So right now, you guys clearly know there's an ordinance in place, right? You guys know that. And that's part of what your reason for being here today is to let us know that. We've heard from the chief of police, the city manager, et cetera. And they believe that ordinance is to stay in place for the moment. Let me, let me, let me finish my thought. So we have already modified it to one degree. Uh, normally, it's sunrise to sunset to dusk. We've extended it to eleven o'clock. There's no one in here who disagrees at all with your right to protest, with your right to assemble, for your right to speak the piece and make sure your voices are heard in a real way. And we all actually agree with that. That's not the issue at all. So what I would propose, I think Councilmember Cohn was, was trying to get to a place that we think is reasonable. How many of you are going to be out in the park tomorrow? Okay, hands down. How many, how, how many of you are going to be out in the park on Thursday? Okay? How many are going to be out in the park on Friday, Saturday, Sunday? All right, so what, what I would like to propose as a thought, and it's taking what Councilmember Cohn started to get at. Um, I would be willing to come out to the park on the next two, three days and sit down with a group of you, hear your thoughts and concerns very specifically on what we want to see happen between now and the next week or the week after, in very short order, knowing that one option is a camping ordinance. We know that, so we'll have that dialogue. If that doesn't happen, then what are some other things that we can do to make sure your voices are being heard in a real way? And I've heard a resolution could be one opportunity, that we articulate something that we think gets at the nitty-gritty for what we believe in Sacramento, and it speaks up and down the state and beyond the state of California. And I would make a commitment, I don't know if I had this kind of clout, but I would make this commitment, that if we do come up with some sort of resolution in short order, that I'm going to be going back to Washington in November, and I will do my best. Who do we want that letter to go to? The President? And Congress? So wait, wait, okay, hold on. So these are, well, I can't give a letter to everybody. So, so these are the things, these are the things over the next couple of days that we could start talking about, because we do want to be responsive in a real way. And I, and I, and I, and I, and I, see, I mean, this is not working for me right now. You got to let me get my piece out. So that, to me, is the first step of a real dialogue. Mr. Carter, you've seen me walk by the park. I snuck in there, talked to a couple people when you, some of y'all weren't in there. And I'm saying, let's keep that dialogue going in real order. And I would ask you and a small group of folks, we'll choose a time today, I mean, tomorrow, the next day, we come out and have this dialogue. And I think that is a huge step in that direction. And I, I know it may not be ideal today, but that is a step that I think we all feel comfortable. And what I would ask is two or three council members to come out with me if they can. So it's not just one person. There's a couple of us. That's us being responsive to what you are saying as a community. We all know, wait, hold on. We all know the unemployment rate here is far too high. We all know that the foreclosure rate has been hit. We've been hit harder than almost anywhere else in the country. We know that. We've got to find a way to create jobs and make sure our streets are safe and secure in short order. You guys are bringing that to our attention. But not only are you asking us to do something, when we go out there and have a dialogue, we're going to ask you to be a part of the solution as well. And you guys have taken a step in that direction today, and we got to be able to continue that. And that's what I would ask over the next couple of days. So I will, I guess I'll coordinate it with, with Mr. Carter? What's that? I'm sorry. Okay.
Is dialogue, and, and that, and we can make that happen. So you just give us the time that it's, you're available to, to make that happen tomorrow. It's, uh, farmer's market, so there's a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll make sure it happens tomorrow and next day. Yes, ma'am.